One of the things that is pretty constant for the tourism department is just answering questions from folks, whether it's phone calls, emails, or in-person requests. It's a pretty constant barrage of trying to problem solve. For people, not just problem solve, but just like whatever their needs are, whatever they're inquiring about, we try to figure that out for them. That can be a super wide range of things, whether it's, you know, what restaurants are there in Guthrie? Or answering Facebook questions about how do I get in touch with somebody who's in charge of the Seward Cemetery? It's not always limited to tourism. We try to be excellent in our delivery of customer service. So no matter what those questions are, we either get them answered or find someone who could answer them. Now, one of the ways that we do that is just through a brochure that we make available. We get an awful lot of requests for brochures to be mailed to people, whether that's them contacting us directly. They might be visiting, you know, in a few months and they love a brochure and a map so they can kind of plan their visit. Or we also make those Guthrie brochures and maps available on the Travel OK website. And an arrangement we have with Travel OK is they have brochures from different communities around the state that are available to be ordered on their site. They take care of that for us. So when someone inquires with Travel OK and they say, hey, we want a Guthrie brochure, Guthrie map, I deliver boxes of those to the Travel OK warehouse. Travel OK will mail those out for us and then we just reimburse them for the cost of postage. So it's a super efficient system that saves an awful lot of time and effort on our end. About 200 brochures a month get mailed out to individuals who request them from all over the country. That would take us an awful lot of time to do that ourselves. That's a great service that the state provides and, you know, they eat the cost of their staff time to make it happen. All we have to do is pay for postage. So it works out really well for us. On top of that, 2,400-ish that goes out through Travel OK, we have all the other requests that come in to us, usually through email. We get quite a few through our guthrieok.com website where people can request brochures. We also have a list available for download. They don't need a paper copy in front of them. For the first time ever, Travel OK has made a PDF of our brochure and map available on their site that people can download. So that just started after the pandemic kind of kicked in. That was able to be something that they worked out and they just started sending me updates on how many digital downloads of our brochure and map. I think we've had maybe 100 downloads of the digital version, but I think that's going to gain in popularity as more people realize that's an option and it'll save us postage. I think we spend about 100 bucks a month. It's totally worth it for that direct service to people who are actively requesting information from us. Another thing we do is we make event support funding available via application. So there's a pot of money that we budget for basically granting purposes. Primarily, this is for local organizations to put on events here in town. This year, we were able to fund with the advice of the CVB board, every organization that applied for funding. Two of the events that were approved for funding were canceled this year because of pandemic, 89ers Week and the Bluegrass Festival, OIBF. Both of those were not able to occur this year. Hopefully, those things are back on track next year. Obviously, hotel motel revenue has taken a hit this budget year, whereas sales tax has been pretty healthy for Guthrie and surrounding communities. The hotel motel revenue for us, as well as other places, has really, even throughout the country, hotel revenue has just been pretty decimated. We've been down 20% decrease in revenue for the year, which when the pandemic started, I thought the bottom was going to completely drop out, but it hasn't been quite as awful as expected, mainly because of some pretty significant events. I think that Lazy E was able to corral for this summer from other states that have proven to be pretty beneficial to both our hotel community and retail and restaurant too. Lazy E has been fantastic for at least keeping hotel motel revenue afloat. Hopefully, we have the chance to really capture a lot of the folks going forward into the fall and in the next year, who may not necessarily feel comfortable making, you know, elaborate vacations where they fly to remote, far-off places, but they want just a weekend getaway and they can drive. And Guthrie is perfectly situated for those small weekend trips. So hopefully, that's something that really is a boost to us going forward in the next year of, you know, everybody figuring out how to arrange their lives around the complicated context we live in now. When everything began shutting down, we tried to think of as many ways as possible to keep Guthrie in front of people's eyeballs. Even if we didn't have events or the usual things to promote, we wanted to be able to at least have some content to keep Guthrie front and center as much as possible. So we did a few things, like we created a virtual walking tour that has both the audio version of just historical markers to people. There's also some video versions of that that are incorporated into a pretty cool function in the Art GIS software. They have a web-based function where you can create an interactive map. And so we've made one with the historical markers, embedded the video and audio along with it. So you can use that map to either follow it through downtown to the different marker locations, or you can just follow along via your computer at home or your phone even for folks who trapped in their living room. It was just one more way for them to see Guthrie without necessarily being here in person, but maybe gave them a taste of what historic Guthrie is like. Had a couple volunteers that were super helpful with the story map function of the GIS stuff. So that was a cool learning experience to figure out how those story maps are built and that functionality. When the pandemic started, we kind of put the Hit the Bricks podcast on hold for a while, just because communicating with special guests and getting them, getting those arrangements made were just a little too complicated. Even via Zoom, it just, we didn't want to burden those guests with figuring things out when they're trying to figure out 1,000 other things. So, but we did get 15 episodes done. Hit the Bricks podcast in FY20 and we should be able to fire those back up here in the near future. That's been a cool experience and way for us to really highlight a lot of our community partners, whether that's business owners or event coordinators, whoever it might be, gives them an opportunity to really highlight their businesses and events. Every time we get a chance to collaborate with someone on some collaborative outreach, that is great for us and great for them. I hope that the Hit the Bricks format can pick back up and improve and keep going. Keeping going with the FY20 accomplishments. We did another of the interactive story map tours that included the downtown murals. Guthrie, downtown Guthrie is full of some pretty fantastic artwork when it comes to mural work. So many pretty mind-blowing hand-painted signs. A lot of neighborhoods and districts and towns are very lucky to have a couple. And we have just an absurd amount of really high-quality, well-done murals. And so just being able to do another of those interactive story map tours give us just one more little virtual outreach kind of thing to keep Guthrie front of people's eyeballs. Something that we've been able to do this past year was try to find different ways that we can collaborate with our Edmund Tourism colleagues, counterparts. In some ways, we're competitors. In other ways, we're able to kind of combine resources to save both money and energy and time. We were able to get pretty good discount on sharing a full-page ad in the Oklahoma Travel Guide. If you haven't seen it, there was a really well-done ad that we combined to have Sean Hancock from here in Guthrie do the artwork for it. It was just a kind of a celebration of old Main Street. I'm partial to Guthrie's downtown, but obviously Edmund has, their downtown Main Street as well, that's pretty cool and growing. So we were able to do an Experience Main Streets ad that incorporated both Guthrie and Edmund into that, just to, you can make a day trip from anywhere in the state or even the surrounding states to hit both Edmund and Guthrie in the same day. And so it makes sense to kind of promote that. Spend a few hours in downtown Guthrie and then hop in your car and head down the road a few minutes and do the same thing there in downtown Edmund. So both of those downtown Main Street experiences combined to make a pretty cool collaboration. We had some other collaborative stuff that was in the works, kind of got derailed by pandemic stuff, trying to combine different amenities here in Guthrie for travel packages. For example, a package with Dominion House, the restaurant there, and the Armstrong Auditorium Concert Series. They have some pretty international acts that perform there at the Armstrong Auditorium, which is kind of in between Edmund and Guthrie. That was going to be a little bit of an experiment this year. And it was all set up. We were able to put those entities together in a room to figure out how they could sell packages to tourists. And they had it set up and were actively trying to sell those packages. And then the whole world went crazy and it didn't work this year. So hopefully, after the tourism world opens back up, those entities, as well as others, that we can try to find package opportunities and get them together to sell Guthrie together would be pretty beneficial to a marketing standpoint for our town. One other thing that eats up a lot of the tourism department's time, especially during non-pandemic times, is we process a form or an application for the city called an Exclusive Use Application. Anytime any organization wants to use a city property for an event, whether it's parks, streets, sidewalks, whatever it might be, any public property that wants to use for an event, we process that application. So a lot of times that involves sitting down with an event ahead of time just to kind of, A, explain the application to them, and B, try to help them organize their event in such a way that getting your application approved is more likely. There's a lot of pitfalls we can try to help them avoid from the beginning, especially with new events. A lot of times they have no idea what some of the odd quirks are and problems can be with holding an event on public property. So we try to help them through that process before they submit their application. And then, once they submit it, we send that on to all the different department heads for feedback. Then we act as a liaison between the department heads and the city manager and the event. And as soon as we get all the kinks ironed out, then it becomes, it's approved. Everything meets all the city standards for different stuff, it's approved and they get to have their event. Another item that takes up a pretty good chunk of time for us is working with mainly location managers for films. The film industry, as everybody knows, it's taking off in Oklahoma. There have been times in the last year when that can be the full-time job of the tourist department. There were a couple of months this year when it was just kind of a non-stop customer service situation for helping things work out for the film productions that were either trying to find locations, trying to find ways of getting their Exclusive Use Applications approved, or usually it's streets, sidewalks for those folks. Sometimes it's city buildings that they might want to shoot in and/or around. In terms of the amount of time that's devoted to film industry stuff, it can come and go and it ebbs and flows a little bit. It did shut down quite a bit during the height of pandemic stuff, March, April, May, but even then, there have been a couple of films, mainly the Reagan film that was still really pushing forward, just trying to plan, just trying to figure out how to make a movie in the middle of a pandemic. For a good-sized film like that, it's really, really complicated. So they've been working with us, we've been working with them, trying to figure stuff out. Especially some of the smaller films are also starting to open back up a little bit. And then Reagan should be a good guinea pig for the industry of how to do a major film with the current COVID regulatory guidelines. And that's mainly an industry guideline, not necessarily Guthrie or Oklahoma guidelines. We do an awful lot of work trying to point those location managers and other film folks in the direction of the resources they need to get their films made in Guthrie. The amount of money that gets spent in Guthrie really is pretty significant with films. And there's a lot of different avenues for revenue that don't always get noticed, whether that's, you know, them renting space, leasing different, you know, location spaces, office spaces. There've been a few of them that have utilized local caterers for their craft services for their films. Lots of hotel and B&amp;B. They typically lean more towards the B&amp;B side of things, especially being able to use the Pollard Inn and some of the other downtown lodging resources. It lets them kind of keep everything in one super convenient location where they can have some office space and lodging with either in the same building or even a block, two blocks, three blocks. One other thing that has fallen under the tourism department umbrella is a lot of the audiovisual needs for the city of Guthrie as a whole. Aaron Reibert does fantastic, all of the audiovisual stuff for every department. His work is pretty cross-cutting, not just tourism stuff, but for everybody. We were able to replace the sound system in the council chambers this past year. A lot of the elements of that were pretty ancient and whether it was microphones or the mixing system or all that stuff was just a problem child that was giving us fits every single meeting in there. So that was a huge upgrade for, whether it's city council meetings or anything that happens there in the council chambers. That was something that probably hasn't been noticed, because when those things work really well, you don't notice them. As soon as it was replaced and upgraded, the structure for the meetings in the council chambers changed with social distancing and everything else. So we had to kind of go back in there and have the company that installed stuff for us, they kind of go back and retool things for sitting people in different places than we had planned. There was a couple of weeks of trial and error to get that dialed in. And we can have our city council and staff and whatever groups that are meeting in there as spaced out as they are, it can still sound, sound good and work for them. That was something that hopefully, nobody notices. Let's go down to some of the FY21 department goals for next year. One of the things, you know, I talked about the Exclusive Use Application for folks wanting to use public property. That particular permit has existed in its current state for quite a while, and I think there's some efficiencies we can add to that process. I think to make it easier on both department heads, make it easier on us as the city staff and the people who are applying for those kind of things. We kind of run into a number of the same problems, you know, pretty regularly with that application. So always coming here, I'm planning on just talking with every department to see like, you know, how that application can be changed to make it better for them and also working with some of the applicants to say, see how it could be a better process. And that could be just changing the application some itself and even adding some, like a little bit more customer service elements to it in terms of maybe like, you know, some instructional video of how the, how to avoid some of the usual pitfalls of an application that may not get approved initially. Just, yeah, just trying to be helpful in getting those things in approved in an efficient way for all of us. Shonda has been working on a website that will be specific to the film industry, kind of a one-stop shop of what they would need to know to be able to find what they need in Guthrie, but also exist as a recruitment tool. There'd already been something where I mentioned that Shonda was working on that to some film folks and they were like, okay, we need that, you know, yesterday, because that would be helpful for them in terms of pitching things to hire up folks. We can get that dialed in and up and running. Something that we're going to try to be doing is start planning some smaller events ourselves in order to kind of bridge the gap between the events, the large events that just aren't happening this, this fall, this winter. And so we're going to try to come up with ways that our department can do some, you know, lighter, quicker, cheaper kind of things ourselves, mainly to keep Guthrie, again, in people's minds. Even if we're not having Bluegrass or the usual Christmas celebrations, we'll still have some things that offer us content that we can push out toward the world, small opportunity that we're trying to pull off here. Actually, at the beginning of October, they're one of the mountain bike races that's part of a larger series of mountain bike races in the state that usually occurs in Tulsa, canceled. And so I've been working with a couple of the local mountain bike enthusiasts to, we pitched the idea to the series that, hey, we could put a mountain bike race on at Liberty Lake at the, on the trail there. And the series, like, they jumped all over it. Something new and a pretty, a pretty cool course that's in place there. And the equestrian folks who have really put in an unbelievable amount of work out there to make that trail fantastic, they were, they were cool with that. And so we're going to be working over the next month or so to get that course kind of dialed in and figure out how to put a mountain bike race on. So it'll be interesting. That's a way to have a small event that's not super COVID dangerous. It's a single-track trail. We get to practice a little bit of social distancing, but still have some event opportunities and some good content to throw out there to the world. We'd also like to look at in the next year to kind of take up some of that lost event space is maybe some small concerts. There at Mineral Wells Park, we've got the really great facility there with the pavilion and a little stage, and it doesn't get utilized, I think nearly enough. You know, whatever feels right, whether that's in the fall or in the spring, it feels right to, to host some, like, some small music events there. I think that would be pretty cool for us to be able to put out there, especially now that there's some new amenities at the park. I think a little concert series would be a great way to kind of show that off, have some event stuff going on, but not have something that's, we definitely don't want to have some gigantic outbreak of disease because of, trying to do. I'd love to look at finding different ways that we can be helpful for the bicycle tourist industry. It's something that I've been reading quite a bit about and it's growing and growing in popularity, especially since the pandemic started. It's kind of exploded, the bicycle industry in general has exploded, but bicycle tourism is really, really expanding. If you look at the different types of outdoor sports tourism, bicycle tourists have the highest level of income and highest level of education. I think it's about equal to golf in terms of their expendable income. Guthrie has become, and Logan County has become, a hub for the gravel cycling community, which is probably the fastest-growing area of cycling in the United States. The United States is incredibly not bicycle-friendly, but the cycling community throughout the country has figured out that, hey, we may not have the cycle paths or the bicycle infrastructure that, say, you know, Europe has, but we have endless amounts of gravel roads. And most of those gravel roads have low car traffic and are super safe for bicycling. In Oklahoma, Logan County, A, it's centrally located in the state, and B, we have a great network, just miles and miles and miles, countless miles of great gravel roads. We're going to continue to find some ways to help those bicycle tourists explore our community with some online tools. Something that was pretty cool about this year is F&amp;M Bank wanted to help support the local bicycle community and incentivize bicycle tourists to come and visit. So they donated a bicycle repair station to be installed there at the tourism office. The parking lot that we share with Hoboken Coffee Roasters is a pretty regular start and stop point for a lot of cyclists who drive up from Edmund, Oklahoma City, over from Stillwater or all over central Oklahoma. It's kind of become a start and stop hub of those gravel cycling community. And so being able to add that repair station there in front of our building is a really nice touch and a really nice piece of hospitality for that community. So thanks to F&amp;M Bank, especially Jed Wagner over there. As the COVID stuff continues on, a lot of it is just a complete mystery in terms of how certain things are going to shape up over the next year. But we're going to continue to try to figure out new and different virtual opportunities if we need to. If it's still complicated and difficult, promote or organize larger events in the coming year. We've got to figure out different ways of developing some more virtual opportunities along with, you know, some of the smaller socially distant friendly type things too. Our goals for '21 will be to continue to work with Lazy E to find different ways that we can promote Guthrie to their customers, as well as help Lazy E to promote Lazy E to the outside world. They've been great this year at attracting events from other states, whether it's Nebraska, New Mexico, other places, where their events just couldn't occur because of regulations. Lazy E has been successful at bringing those to, to our area this summer, and that's been a huge benefit to our tax base, for sure, and our, just our local restaurants and shops. Now Lazy E is working diligently to see if they can capture those events, not just for a one-off summer, you know, whether it's the National High School Rodeo or the Barrel Futurities or a lot of these other fantastic one-time events. They'd love to talk them into making this their permanent home. Those are huge moneymakers, both for Lazy E and for Guthrie. And so finding different creative ways that we can help them, you know, attract those biz, those, those events for years to come is something that is definitely, we're already trying to do that. We meet with both the Lazy E management, our colleagues from Edmund, just about once a month. How do we capture these people? How do we get them into our restaurants and hotels? And how do we help Lazy E attract, attract the newest and greatest events for our community? So that's, that's going to be part of our job going forward for years and years to come. Lazy E is just an unbelievable benefit to our community, not just with their events, but even with their direct spending on a lot of their day-to-day operations out there. Working with them is absolutely necessary. Capital improvement projects that happen in Guthrie, like literally every single CIP idea and project that people, the other departments bring to city council, all of those things, either directly or indirectly, benefit tourism. Tourism depends on, you know, everything from, you know, our police force, EMS and fire, trails, streets, wastewater. Like, all that stuff has, has an effect on the tourism experience of Guthrie. The tourism department making our own CIP improvement list. A few of the things that I think would be like, super beneficial, like directly beneficial to tourism. A covered downtown structure that would enable us to have some more smaller events and things like a downtown farmer's market. But what I'm asking for is something that allows people to have a better pleasant experience downtown. Oklahoma, especially in the summertime, is just the hottest place imaginable. And if we could create hospitable, covered structure that's not putting vendors and customers out in the obliterating sunshine, that can also host, you know, some small music events, small festivals. That shade structure can't be overstated in terms of its importance to, like, foot traffic. If you want foot traffic, which our downtown merchants, they depend on 100%, we've got to find a way to make our downtown experience convenient and pleasant. We've had the conversation previously about pretty elaborate, you know, outdoor event space, which is incredible. A simpler, more inexpensive version of that, in my mind, that's similar to the, like the Edmund Farmer's Market complex. Those kind of structures are super beneficial to downtown businesses. Walking, hiking, biking trails, that's one of those amenities that has a huge return on investment, even though hiking, walking, biking trails are a serious dollar investment for our city. Especially on the biking trail side of things, people will travel to find those things. The tourists who utilize them spend a lot of money, but they're also a quality of life kind of thing that more and more people are just demanding of the communities that they want to move to. Whether it's bike lanes or sidewalks or walking trails, those are significant cost items. But one thing that's not quite as bad, not quite as bad, is the, just the mountain bike trail, equestrian trail idea. When you're talking about just clearing, when you're talking about just clearing trails through a wooded area, whether it's Liberty Lake or some, anywhere else that where we have current city property, doesn't require the surface amenities of like asphalt or concrete or whatever, that's a pretty sizable expense. So mountain bikers, horse folks, getting more and more of those people into our community is a way for us to increase our revenue for both sales tax, hotel motel tax. Those people have expendable income. A great return on investment because those people. Outdoor recreation at the state parks in Oklahoma has absolutely just blown up during pandemic stuff. Tourism Recreation Department is really going to try to capture and expand that customer base in the future, now that more and more people have experienced our state parks. Municipal lakes are going to be able to kind of ride the coattails of what our state's doing with state parks. So being able to add things over time to Liberty and Guthrie Lakes will be a pretty important thing for us to keep in our city plans, whether it's, you know, more camping amenities, more trails, more restrooms. Having some nice restrooms out there at Liberty Lake as opposed to, you know, a couple porta-potties that we've got out there would be a big benefit. Just a couple more things on the ideas for CIP improvements. Guthrie has a great collection of murals in the downtown area. Some of them are starting to age a little bit, and we've also got some space where there's opportunity space-wise and building-wise to add some more to the mural network of our downtown. And so being able to either maintain, we're going to be getting close to needing some And so being able to either maintain, we're going to be getting close to needing some, uh, updating and, um, maintaining. And then being able to kind of maybe expand it at the same time would be, I think, pretty beneficial just to the life of our downtown aesthetically. We, we don't want to see those really cool pieces of our art community deteriorating. And then the last thing I had on my list was, you know, we already have some pretty cool resources with our city parks, city lakes. Being able to kind of capitalize on a few more of those elements that we already have, whether that's Highland Hall. It's utilized quite a bit with our, uh, our senior citizens, being able to renovate that. Not only make it nicer for those folks, which they deserve, maybe utilizing it for some other things too. As well as the scout cabin, which needs a whole lot of, of work there at Island. Most of those buildings could be programmed quite a bit if they were updated and renovated. So whether it's meetings, mall events, different kinds of programming facilities we already have. Finding a way to upgrade those to where we can utilize them on more of a regular and better basis. The things that I think would have a, a pretty good direct effect on tourism. The actual list of things that would improve tourism is about 10, 15 slides long and includes like every other department's presentation in regard to CIP improvements. If you got this far, I really appreciate you listening to me, uh, mumble through, uh, these slides. Um, so that's, uh, 2020 and hope to, uh, share 2021 with you, uh, in about a year. And, uh, hopefully we can go over all the cool stuff that has been, that has occurred in the next 12 months. So, thank y'all.